Good afternoon. Today is Tuesday, November 15th, approximately 4:05 in the afternoon. This is a special board meeting for the Bay County Board of Commissioners. A roll call, please.
Durancheck?
Here.
Bigick?
Here.
Koonin?
Here.
Eric?
Here.
Tilly?
Here.
Lutz?
Here.
Freger?
Yes.
All present.
Very good. We'll stand for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance.
Lord God, our heavenly Father, master of all creations, we come before you this afternoon seeking your guidance, wisdom, and direction. Lord, we ask that you will lead and direct this board to work for this cowering, grant them the knowledge and understanding of the needs for this community. But we ask that you will give this board of commissioners strength, dignity, and honor to work for the common good of all. Amen.
Let's lead us to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, and universal, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next, we have the citizens' input. Anyone like to address the board? Now would be the time to do it. Good afternoon, Mr. Brandt.
Good afternoon, Chairman Freger and Phil County Commissioners. I'm Gary Brandt, Monitor Township Supervisor. I'm here to ask for your support and approval of the amendment to the Monitor Township DDA Development Agreement, which I believe you all have a copy of. This agreement has been signed by the DDA, James Fabiano for Northern Michigan Land, and the Monitor Township Board. We had a meeting last night and we passed this by a vote of five to two. This amendment is a plus-plus for the township and the county in the simple fact that it's going to keep growth in our county, in our township coming in. Our, this agreement has 100 percent pass-through of all the capture taxes until a new project would come into the county and the township. And at that time, the county would have the right to approve or disapprove of any capture of taxes. We also are going to dispute, uh, distribute, uh, there's $480,000 in our funds at the DDA and we would pass through to the taxing entities $400,000 in 2017. And we would keep the $80,000 for the operation of the DDA for the first year because it's too late in this season for us to pass the tax of the two mills that the DDA is going to institute if this passes so that we can keep the DDA in operation. I look forward to your support and I would hope that, we were hoping actually, that the township was hoping that the county would approve this today so we can keep on moving forward on this because time is running out. December 31st is coming fast and we have to have this all completed by December 31st of 2016. So I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Afternoon.
Thank you, Chairman, and the Commissioners. Ken Malkin, I just was elected, so I'll be taking over from Gary and I wanted to reiterate some of the comments he made. I, back very early on and early part of the year, I went to some of the DDA meetings and I was suggesting that we have an agreement such as this. And I think what's important to note is that we're talking about 100 percent of the money being passed through to all the municipalities, including the county and the township. So if a new project comes along, and that's why we want to keep the structure in place, then it'll have to have the approval of everybody. So you'll know what that project is before any money is recaptured. And if it's a project that you don't think meets your approval, then you'll have control over that. And we thought that's what you wanted because I think that was some of the concerns from the past. So I think it's a workable agreement. And as Gary had said, it also includes the DDA assessing themselves two mills so that they can operate until that might come true. Now, in the future, we're only allowed one DDA. If in the future, something else occurs in Monitor Township where we need a DDA in another area of the township, then things will change. But at this point, we don't have that need and we'd like to keep the structure in place because there still is land that needs to be developed. But the concern I have, and I think Gary mentioned on it also, is that, you know, I, there's probably maybe some things that need to be tweaked in the agreement. Actually, I read it through and I think that the thing looks fine as it is. But if, but we are concerned about trying to meet a timeline because we have to change our ordinance to make this effective and we have certain notifications that go out and certain timelines. So at this point, we're hoping to have a first reading of the ordinance that would basically adopt this agreement at our next meeting, which would be November 28th. And then we made a motion then to do the public hearing the second reading, which would then be December 19th. And we are hoping to have a decision from the county board whether up or down prior to at least that first date. So if you can help us with that timeline, we'd appreciate that also. And if there's any questions.
No, I think we're all set. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else wish to address the Board of Commissioners?
Fred Zippler from the Bay County Veterans Council. We would like to recommend and encourage the Board of Commissioners to renew the contract for Art Shupak, is our service officer. Art performs a, he does a heck of a job for the veterans in Bay County for disability claims, other benefits, and you name it. And we veterans, and I'm sure some of you folks are veterans, may or may not need his service someday. I know I did about 11 years ago. But we encourage and we would like to endorse our, or ask that you renew his contract. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, let's move into items for consideration. Under a public hearing on the 2017 Bay County proposed budget, motion to go out of order would be? So moved, Mr. Chairman. Or? Discussion. With none, a roll call, please.
We start a roll call today with Commissioner Koonin.
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Tilly?
Yes.
Lutz?
Yeah.
Durancheck?
Yes.
Bigick?
Yes.
Freger?
Yes.
Seven E's, zero N's.
Very good. So here we're having a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Finance Department is here based on the General Appropriation Budget Act to review the executive level budget for 2017. I've been told to keep it short and sweet, so I'm going to do that.
You take whatever time.
Again, we'll just look at the revenues and expenditures and the recommendations for 2017. This budget strives to balance the needs of the citizens of Bay County and its employees while ensuring fiscal responsibility and excellent service to the Bay County community. The 2017, this is a balanced budget and was submitted on the statutory deadline. The total county spending for all funds is $132 million with total general fund expenditures of $35 million. In 2016, our adopted budget was $33.8 million as compared to the current $35 that is proposed. Our revenues, we have $15.5 million from property tax, which is 46 percent of our revenues that come in, with state grants and other financing, which is transfers in for indirect services from the county, and other revenue, which is reimbursements and contributions, and charges, which are fees for services that we charge for each department. Our general fund property tax over the last 10 years is declining over time. As you can see, in 2017, we proposed $15.5 million, which in 2016, we had a budget of $15.9. This is a $400,000 estimated reduction that was an estimate calculated by the Equalization and Treasurers Department. We'll continue to monitor these property taxes, though, as they come in. Over a nine-year period, we've seen a $2 million reduction in our property tax. Our other general fund revenues, we have $1.2 million transfer to the general fund from the delinquent tax fund, revenue sharing of $2.6 million, and the liquor tax of $371,000. These revenue sources are all stable as compared to the 2016 budget. They've not changed or increased or decreased. Our expenditures, our general fund expenditures are estimated at $35.1 million with wages and fringe benefits making up 60 percent of those expenditures. Our fringe, our wages include, the new minimum wage rules are included in this budget, but it does not include our newly negotiated union contracts that will come in our next budget. So there's no wage increase to the base in 2017 in the executive budget. However, the contract negotiations were finalized on Tuesday, November 8th. Those, the budget does include all step increases and again, the new minimum wage rules. We estimate the contract negotiations to be a cost of $1.8 million with $995,000 coming from the general fund. And then the 1 percent lump sum or three personal days are also included in this budget. Our health insurance, our health insurance contributions is projected to be $3.7 million. This is for active and retirees. This is based on the Brown and Brown illustrative rates. We are continuing our healthcare cost reducing measures. The copays and deductible structure is the same, the prescription incentive, the wellness center, and the wellness programs. Currently in 2016, our insurance claims are coming in below budget. We are actually at a lesser amount than 2014 and '15 in actual claims. So what we see is we, even though we can't put an actual dollar amount to it, we believe that the wellness incentives that we have chosen to use with our wellness center are starting to pay off. We're starting to see that in our current claims, so that's a good thing over time. This budget does, includes the current insurance rates, which went up very slightly. You wouldn't even notice it really, which is a good thing compared to a lot of other areas that are seeing a larger increase. Our retirement system, the general fund expenditures, as of December 31st, our general group for the retirement system is funded at 116 percent. In 2015, or 2014, excuse me, it was 112 percent. However, this budget does still include, even though it's recommended that we don't have to make a contribution, we have still put our 4 percent employer contributions to our pension fund. And we generally, or in the general group, we have a current of 359 active members in that group. Our retirement system for the sheriff's group is a funded ratio of 123 percent, and that is exactly the same as it was in 2014, so it stayed stable. Again, it's asking for no employer contributions, but the budget does include our normal 4 percent employee contributions to this fund. So over time, our percentage of funding level for our pension has slightly gone down over time. Again, the reductions are based on the market values and the return on investments. We still are funding at our 4 percent level, but we've seen a slight increase in the general group and stayed stable over the, roughly the last three years. Our major transfers out for the 2017 budget are the Health Department at $1.03 million. That increase is, it's an increase over of $135,000, which is mainly covering indirect costs. Our juvenile home of $619,000, and our childcare fund is budgeted at $947,000, which $212,000 is an increase in general fund from '16 to '17. This increase is actually covered 50 percent from the state, so it's a $400,000 increase for the foster care program. By budgeting this in the 2017 budget, we feel that the childcare fund will not have to come back to the board to ask for additional revenue by the end of the year, so we're hoping to cover that foster care program. Our 2017 major capital expenditures for the general fund are building and grounds at $437,000, which of $400,000 is the countywide phone system, which we are currently working on. And then sidewalk and the front steps of the county building repairs make up the difference of that. The Sheriff's Department, $195,900, which includes a security for the cell blocks or a catwalk, and then a steamer for the kitchen. Our IT department, which is at $527,500, which is computer hardware and software, which it also includes a $350,000 purchase of new jail software. And our secondary road patrol at $111,200, which is for the purchase of three vehicles. Our budget stabilization fund, in 2016, we will be moving $1.6 million of the, in, out of the unassigned into the budget stabilization to reserve at a level of 20 percent. We are currently at 15 percent based on the Public Act of 2016, number 169. So our 2015, currently our budget stabilization has $5.1 million and 6.0 of unreserved for a total of 13, there's 13 million in reserves overall. This just shows the budget stabilization and the unrestricted. After our increase of $1.6 million in 2016, there'll be $6.7 million in the budget stabilization fund from a total of $5.1. Our recommendations from the Finance Department, we approximate, to use approximately $1.4 million of unassigned fund balance to balance the 2017 budget that is included currently. Continue to prioritize capital outlay projects as to reduce the level of 2017 projects based on need. Our capital outlay is budgeted at $3.8 million countywide and $2.3 million for the general fund. Finalize the negotiated union contracts for the three periods of 2017 through 2019 and adjust the budget as necessary. And this approach, the Finance Department believes that it serves the needs of the citizens of Bay County and its employees. Additional decisions and adjustments will have to be made to the 2017 operating budget to ensure the fiscal responsibility by still maintaining our service to the community. That's all I have.
Questions? Commissioner Koonin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Going to the childcare fund budget in 2017 and increasing that budget, that line item, so we don't have to come back to the commission, I hope that's not the solution to the problem of just to, you know, budget more money. I believe we had some issues this particular year. I think we lost a valuable employee over there. And I think we need to have a program, even though they're a co-employer, I don't think we could really ask them to do anything. But if you lose a valuable employee, I think you have to have something in place where you could train somebody new coming in because somebody new coming in doesn't have the same knowledge or experience as that person leaving. And I think, I don't know if that was part of the problem, why over the last couple of years, we allocated or did a budget adjustment, several budget adjustments for this childcare fund. And I don't know if it had anything to do with that employee leaving and maybe somebody not having the same understanding of what needed to be done. So just throwing money or increasing money so we don't have to come back to the county for a budget adjustment, I don't think's the solution. So hopefully, we've got that particular childcare fund issue corrected, or we're going to bring somebody in to ensure that when these kids, and I think it's, this goes to a small group of kids that are placed in a specialized treatment. Whether we pay for it, or the state, or the feds pay for it, that's very important. We pay for it, that really cuts into our budget. If we have to pay for it, that's fine, but if those kids could be categorized where the state and the federal are responsible for, that's where they should be. So I hope we are able to work with the courts. And I understand people retire and I understand new people come in, but there should be a willingness to utilize the resources that we have to ensure that the new person coming in has the information that they need in order to correctly categorize things so that we're not doing budget adjustments where maybe we don't need to.
The Finance Department does currently meet with the courts on a monthly basis up in the Finance Department, and we do go over those issues and we will continue to monitor that. But what we've seen is that there's fewer children that are being, or qualifying as a 4E child, where the state would pick up more, and they're falling into the local category. So to keep the budget true to what we are actually spending, the $400,000 was increased for that reason. But we will continue to monitor and work on those, trying to get the children qualified for the 4E.
I understand. I'm only, as you presented us with this information, I'm only looking at over the past couple of years where we had to do some significant budget adjustments. And this kind of reflecting when this individual retired. So hopefully, you know, I guess I said what I wanted to say. And then if I still have the floor, this budget does reflect the ice arena being paid off, the bonds are?
Correct.
Is this the first year that?
Yes.
The budget reflected that? That was half a million dollars or something?
Yes.
The last payment was paid in November, or approximately $450,000.
So we're looking at a significant deficit on top of the fact that we reduced some of our expenditures, a significant one.
And we also paid off courthouse payments.
Court, yeah.
Okay. Now, if I still have the floor, I know we do do some trending, you know, the thing that kind of is, is kind of disconcerting, is where we are, our property tax revenues went down by $400,000. Were you able to predict that last year? Or are we able to predict, and I know a prediction is just a prediction, what's going to happen next year and the year after in regards to property taxes?
I know they're continuing to watch those, but we don't have good figures right now. We believe the $400,000 would be a safe estimate, again, going in with the safest estimate as we can get. I don't want to overstate it either, so.
Well, you know, I thought with the ice arena being paid off and courts being paid off, that we would start to see some positive things in the budget, but this looks like it's cycling more negatively, so we need to be very cautious of this going forward.
Well, the civic arena payment was $450,000, but our taxes went down $400,000.
Yeah, so it's a wash. Well, I understand that, but I'm just saying, I was hoping that with that being, the civic arena being paid off, that we would be looking at a more, a better financial situation, but it doesn't look like that because of the trending of the property taxes.
The savings in the civic arena and the courthouse payment is eaten up by the $400,000 decrease in the property tax and another $150,000 more we lost. And this $1.4 million, that doesn't include the pay raises. And we've been working.
Working.
Always, or four times a week. And so by Friday or Monday at the latest, I believe we'll have an update where we suggested some cuts and some additional revenue, or even one-time transfers. But we have been using the fund balance out of the healthcare, or I mean, the health insurance special fund, and we've used it out of the self-insurance fund. So it's not just the whack we're going to take here in the general fund, a couple other funds we've been using the fund balance.
Mr. Freger.
Regards to the childcare funding, it's been an issue for the, all the counties in the state. And it's being looked at at the state level, there's some pilot projects they have in Grand Rapids area, and the Michigan Association of Counties have been looking at it. I don't think it's just been the last couple of years. I think it seems like every year we're adjusting the budget upward for the childcare fund. And so it's been a real problem, so hopefully it can be addressed this year through the legislature that's being looked at real, real seriously because it's affecting the House of State. The other point is I would point out the pension part, and how our county executives have information about Saganon where they're at with their pension funds and how far they're underfunded. I think that's a positive in our, in our report, that we, we've been doing a good job of keeping that funding level up compared to a lot of the other counties, and that's an issue that's being addressed at the state level, too, the underfunding for Loudon and municipalities. Thank you.
Anyone else, questions?
The childcare funding, four years ago, was like at $480,000, now it's $947,000. And, but one of the things, in addition to the monthly meetings and finance, as with the courts, we've had three or four meetings, special meetings, going just over the childcare fund. And they went, we asked them to go through every single case they had, and they brought in a former employer, or employee that went through every single one, and they came up with maybe $100,000 savings, but it still doesn't make the difference up. But one of the things we found out is that the reason most of these people, or a lot of these clients are not qualifying for what is a 4E, federal funding 4E, is because the criteria for family income is based on the 1990 census of a family income. And that's like $10,000, whereas today, the poverty level income is 20. And I sent that information out to my spouse at the bank, so we'll see what comes up there. And that's not the only problem we may have, is that they're considering December 1st, 20 bills go to the House Committee on Juvenile for them to make 17-year-olds juveniles. That's going to really negatively affect our amount of money that we spend in the juvenile. And speaking of our unfunded liabilities, the state is now meeting again about making us pay for our retiree health insurance up front. us pay for our retiree health insurance fund. So, that's, we've tried that before, but that's going to affect every city and every township, so I don't know how far that'll get, but we, we may have to start funding our VBA.
Anyone else? Commissioner Lutz.
Is there anything that we can do to work with MAC and NACO to get, you know, pressure put out in the federal legislature? Apparently that's where we need to head to, to get these criteria changed for the 4E, to raise those levels up so that, you know, these people actually qualify at their current, you know, dollar amount.
I've had a couple conversations and sent the information to MAC, hoping that they would get a hold of NACO, because we don't belong to NACO.
Right. So, can I add?
Please do.
Commissioner Begic, you know, you're dealing with MAC and that, are they, you know, trying to work with NACO on this?
It's a high priority item at the state level, and with NACO, we might want to consider joining NACO. It is a national issue, it's not a state issue so much, though. We have a bad members of NACO in the past with our extra money. Do you have any?
Commissioner Begic recommended that. A couple things.
All right. Anyone else? That being said, a motion to go back into the...
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Discussion? With none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Thank you very much. Rick, seeing that we just laid out the budget, if you've got a moment, maybe we could talk a little bit about capture taxes. Should commissioners have a question on that also?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If I could just take a minute, maybe supply some more information for Commissioner Coonan on the property taxes. Obviously, being a treasurer, I see that firsthand. Couple of factors going on there. One of the biggest ones is that the legislatures in Lansing is phasing out the personal property taxes over time, both by eliminating small businesses paying anything, and also a large, so part of that decrease is the ongoing phase-out of personal property, which I think you're just going to continue to see, foresee in the future as it's eliminated. The other major issue, obviously, we all know property values have declined all over, including Bay County, but, you know, you ask for projections, they're tough, because we're relying on what property values are going to do in the future. And I guess my gut feel from seeing the market, I believe sales are starting to rise, but there's a two-year lag for all that to filter through. But the other issue is with Proposal A that we've always had, even if the property values go up, it's limited by the increase of the rate of inflation, which is only 0.7 percent for 2016. So, even if the property values were to rebound, we still can have that cap. So, you know, projections are only as good as what you put in them, but I think gut feel is we're probably going to be waiting a while to see that number increase significantly. And if I could take one more minute and add to Commissioner Begic's on pensions. I'm the vice chair of the Bay County Pension, as we continually say how well-funded it is, and that's the result of a lot of hard work of a lot of people. And part of SAGNOA's problem, a major one, is these politicians in Lansing and elsewhere say, "Well, we'll just eliminate pensions and we'll save all this money." But the part they fail to mention is, when you do that, you cut off the flow of new money coming in from those employees and employers, so that's a major issue. So, now they have a multimillion dollar number to face. So, as they continue in Lansing to talk about governments' pensions, I think both the Board and our retirement board need to be proactive and to defend that valuable benefit to all employees in the county. Thank you.
Very good. Commissioner Begic.
Just to point out, MAC is adamantly opposed to a lot of those tax breaks for supposed charitable organizations, and, you know, they're trying to keep adding, adding on to those people that get tax breaks, and it takes money away out of our pocket. Some of their organizations are supposedly charitable, but they're not really, if you really look at their mission and vision statement, so they're opposing any of that legislation.
Right, yes, they are. That's just another reduction in taxes than, obviously, we have to deal with at the local level. But, okay, back to the capture of taxes that you requested, Mr. Chair. I know there's been a lot of discussion recently on TIFAs and tax capture, and we had the presentation from Jones and Ingham County, and I know there's discussions going on with Monter County, or Township. I'd like to put some numbers to that that you requested. Part of the property tax settlement, the local cities and townships collect the taxes. In each March, they turn them over to the county treasurer to, we call, settlement, what the delinquent taxes are, that the county got their money, the schools got their money. And in that process, we have to go through the TIF capture, because obviously that's money taken away, and all it has to be balanced. So, over the years, I would occasionally get requests as, "Well, how much is being captured?" Whatever, primarily from the executive and the board financial analysts. So, I maintain a database in my office going back to 1995. It's as far back as I can find records, which is also the year I started working there, by the way. But anyways, I just want, yes, to put some numbers out there. In 2015, which is the last full year we settled, in March of 16, Bay County operating had almost $500,000 captured from it. Now, there's eight local units of government that are capturing taxes, Bangor, Hampton, Monitor, Pinconning Township, Auburn, City of Bay City, Estillsville, and Pinconning With all the other special millages, libraries, and the mosquito controls, and senior citizens, it was another $340,000. That was last year. The second page that was passed out to the Board, going back to 1995, County Operating has had a little over $9 million captured from it over the years, and another 6.7 million of the special millages, the counties, libraries, and seniors, what have you. And then, they also capture money from their own taxes at the city or township, and also Delta College. They used to capture a lot of money from the schools, but with Proposal A, also '94, it was changed where if there is no debt payments left in a TIFA capture, they can't capture from the schools, the state education, or the intermediate schools. So, that's why you'll see on 15 zeros, and those have all phased out. But, just for example, the county only, Bangor Township, 4.3 million, Monter Township, 3.3, City of Bay City, 4.4, and total over 15 million. And then, like I said, down below, you'll see what they capture from themselves. So, I just wanted to put some numbers to some of this discussion. I know discussions get abstract and what have you, but those are the numbers.
Commissioner Begic.
One other point, MAC is working on some of this tax capture legislation also to make some changes to it. I know Ken, who I mentioned before, has got the one to make it more transparent, so people know what these numbers are, but they're still pushing harder to get it a little more, where the counties have more control. That's one issue between, before '94, where the county really doesn't have a say in it, this is sort of a rubber stamp. So, there is legislation being proposed to change the DDA and the TIFA laws, and then MAC is pushing for that, too.
Anyone else? Rick, thank you very much. All right, moving on. Under B, resolution. Commissioner Tilly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have Resolution 2016-288, the 2016-2017 CPVC agreement with the Health Department. I so move this resolution.
Or, discussion? With none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution number 2016-289, the amended L-04029 form for the, form for the 2016 abortion. I so move this resolution.
Or? Discussion? With none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
We have Resolution 2016-290, an agreement with Basic to provide 605-5 and 605-6 service assistance for the ACA reporting services. I so move this resolution.
Support. Discussion? With none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
That concludes business from consideration, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Tilly. We'll move into any unfinished business. No unfinished business, any new business? Anything other miscellaneous? How about announcements? So, we will come to Ms. Amber.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At this point in time, we are requesting a closed session. We're requesting going to closed session, going to MCL 15.268, subsection H, to discuss a legal opinion prepared by attorney Kevin Kilby with the firm of Brown Morris. Also, go into closed session for labor negotiations, going to MCLA 15.268, section HC.
So... Support.
Before we vote on it, I'd like to take a second to say, Mr. Brandt, Mr. Malkin, I appreciate you coming in and addressing the Board. At this time, there will be no action taken by the full Board, but we understand the urgency and the timeframe, and we will do our best to help and aid to make sure that it's done in a timely fashion. So, I just wanted to say thanks for coming in.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Harrick.
Yes, sir.
Tilly.
Yes.
Lutz.
Yes.
Durantchak?
Here.
Begic?
Here.
Rieger?
Yes.
Seven, eight, zero.
Very good. Mike, if you will do the honors.
Yes, sir.
Very good. So, Ms. Amber Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would request that the Board bring a motion, that a member bring a motion to authorize the attorney, Mr. Kevin Kilby, to proceed in accordance with his recommendation in closed session.
So, support. Discussion? With none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
I have no further request for going to closed session.
And Mr. Durantchak.
Motion adjourned, always in order.
Support.
Discussion? With none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye. Or adjourned.
All right. Yeah, that's a good one. You're on the block.